One more thing, one more thing. What's the game plan? You have the presentation with the teachers, then it's the reception after that?
Yeah, it's like fifteen minutes.
And then we come back for the meeting.
Correct.
Okay, the meeting, meeting doesn't happen before...
Correct.
Okay.
She'll open the meeting, of course.
Yeah, the reception and everything, that's all right.
Yeah, you got it. It is hard to see. It's, it's always still what makes performing on stage a little bit easier. Yeah. This is the, this is the original auditorium, but it's, it's, we call it the Playhouse now. It holds about eight hundred people. I see that wall in the back.
She said she didn't know this number.
That building used to be there, so there was no buffer, no vestibules between the outer doors and coming in. So, performance, people would open their doors, and there was no buffer, light was...
I agree.
So, we added that vestibule.
I just have to log in and then we can start. Is everyone in? Where's the flag? Okay, ready? Good evening, oh, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to our board meeting where we have our annual recognition of our Teachers of the Year. It's so nice to see everyone and see your faces and have our first public meeting where we're able to do that. And it seems fitting that we are honoring our teachers after two, exactly, two years of, of big changes in education that have really affected all of us, the students, the staff, the teachers, everyone. And it kind of feels like maybe we're coming out of that now. And, and all of that was done on the backs of teachers. I think we're going to give everyone a round of applause for that right now. Mr. Bolendorf, did you want to make your remarks?
I did, I got to bend over. First of all, it is great seeing everybody's faces and so many family members that I can already identify seeing here, excited for their loved ones to be honored here this evening. We're honoring, I think, thirteen teachers and two educational professionals. I hate that they're separated out because I think teacher is just a universal word for people who make a difference in the lives of others, impart wisdom and make a difference. And there's so many places to do that within this, this business regardless of what position that you hold. And these people today have excelled at doing that and they've been recognized in many cases by their parents, by their students, by their, by their fellow teachers. It's a great honor and it's really the greatest honor that we can, we can bestow upon our educators in Washington Township. You know, it's not a business where, you know, bonus checks come your way and, and other things that happen in industry occur here. The, 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 the things that we hang our hats on as educators are moments like this and moments that follow us through our life when we are walking in the mall and some kid that's an adult that you don't even remember comes up to you and makes a big fuss about seeing you and reminds you of something that you said or did many years ago that made a difference in their life. And that's really what it's all about. And the fact that you're all sitting here today to congratulate and be a part of this with your fellow teachers, with your family is really truly special and I commend all of you. Enjoy it, relish in it, you deserve it, especially during this time to rise to the level of being recognized in probably what I really actually believe was a much harder year, harder year than last year, to be recognized for this because you continue to be a positive light in the classroom for our kids and for the others that are around you because I think that you, you not only make a difference in the lives of your kids, but you make a difference in the lives of your colleagues because they, they see the work that you do, they see the happiness and the difference that you make every single day. And that's what makes what we do special and important. And I thank you for sticking to it regardless of the things going on, sticking to it to continue to be that difference maker in the lives of our children. So, congratulations to all of you. And I'm going to turn things over to my colleague Annette Miller, who will be your emcee for the evening.
First, we have to do the pledge. Annette, Annette, I forgot, we have to do the pledge, also the video announcement.
I was going to remind you, yeah.
Yeah, we, we already did that in the other room. This meeting is being recorded, anyone wishing not to be seen on video may be excused, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, what a fabulous night. Beautiful weather, great honorees and amazing folks in person to really celebrate amazing staff. So, thank you all for coming out. That's probably one of my greatest memories that I will always have in Washington Township is how you all support each other on this night. And before we begin, and I will call Mrs. Christina Cox up first, but I just want to thank all of our staff for everything that you have done every day, every year, whether it's been a pandemic or a typical year, but also to family and friends who have supported you because really none of this we could do by ourselves. So, without, without any delay, I want to, before I bring up Christina, hang in there Christina, I want to thank Mrs. Gretchen Gerber and Dr. Stephen Gregor for helping us distribute the plaques and our golden apple, so they will be the great assistance this evening. And now, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Christina Cox, Principal of Grenlock Terrace Early Childhood Center, our energetic, always smiling principal.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start by congratulating all the Teacher of the Year and Educational Services professional recipients. With the many challenges we have all been faced with these past two years, being here doing something that is normal is a gift. And speaking of gifts, please join me in congratulating Grenlock's Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Kelly Doak. Kelly is joined tonight by her husband Don, her two boys Drew and Connor, her vacations, the best things about her cannot be read about on paper. Kelly is generous and humble. She rarely looks for recognition, but is always an integral part of the school's growth. Kelly is kind and compassionate. She has dedicated her teaching career to helping shape little minds and teaching our most fragile learners in the multiple disabilities program. Kelly is committed to laying the foundation for her students and making their first school experience a memorable one. As an M.D. teacher, Kelly wears many hats. One responsibility is working with the various staff and related service providers within the school. Kelly has four specialized assistants and has worked hard to cultivate a welcoming space that focuses on compassion, teamwork, communication and collaboration. She provides on-the-spot coaching and gives meaningful feedback to the staff within her room. The staff that works with Kelly told me Kelly is very attentive to each kid's individual needs. She puts them first no matter what. If one of us is struggling, she jumps right in and models how we should handle it. She helps us learn and better ourselves in helping these children learn and grow. Additionally, Kelly has developed secure, trustworthy relationships with the parents of the children she teaches. One parent said that Mrs. Doak goes above and beyond like no one I have ever seen before. Another parent wrote, "With all of the various changes caused by COVID, it has been a very stressful time for our family." But one of the true reliable constants in my daughter's life has been Mrs. Doak. Another parent stated, "During a pandemic and the variety of changes that have taken place since its inception, for Mrs. Doak to be able to have a kind heart and provide meaningful instruction shows her dedication to her students and her profession." As you can see, the footprint that Mrs. Doak is leaving has lasting effects not only on her staff, but the students and the families that she serves. Kelly, you touch so many lives. Thank you so much for all that you do and continue to do to grow our littlest learners. Congratulations. I'd now like to introduce my friend and the principal of Bell's Elementary School, Mrs. Jenny Greer.
Good evening and congratulations to all our winners tonight. I would like to introduce you to Bell's Elementary's Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Therese McMullin. Before I start talking about Teresa and publicly embarrassing her, she may be the only person in this room that was hoping for a COVID outbreak, so this would all be virtual. The day we announced Teacher of the Year in the hallway and she was seven shades of red, she turned to me and said, "This will be virtual, won't it?" So, I used my crystal ball and said, "Sure."
So, you're welcome.
So, I promised I will be brief to save her the public embarrassment. But first, I'd like to introduce that, or point out to you that her family is all here to join her, her four children, her husband Joe, and the rowdy crew, which is our neighborhood friends in the row behind. Also, we have a very large group of Bell's teachers that came out to enjoy this public embarrassment for Therese. So, as many of the teachers here, Therese is not somebody who did this for the limelight. She's not in it for the attention and she's very uncomfortable right now, I can actually feel it. She's rushing me. So, I've known Therese only eight short years and those, in those eight years, she did three different jobs. She was interventionist, she was the best Read 180 Teacher Bell's had, we had one. And then she took her skills and talent into in-class support as a special ed teacher. But through all those different roles, there's one thing that never changed. Therese's one job was to teach children and to be their advocate, and she never let them down. I can attest to this because when you talk to the children about her, she will tell you, they will tell you flat out, "She looks serious," until she smiles. And she smiles a lot. She takes my hand when I'm scared. She teaches me how to read. She teaches me how to spell. But she teaches me how to be kind from the mouth of a first grader. It's pretty impressive. Teaching people how to be kind, that's a skill we could all, you know, enjoy. So, throughout the eight years I've known Therese and through all the different roles, besides teaching children, she's also taught the staff. We talk all the time about the influence of teachers on children. I think one of the biggest influences they have is on each other and Therese has been a positive role model for all the teachers at Bell's School. She takes the time to get to know the teachers that she works with, the support staff that, that works in her room. She cares about them and they care about her. And that's a testament of, as to who she is, someone that people want to get to know and want to be kind to. She spends so much time with her students and helping them reach their goals. She communicates with their parents and often because she's a mother of twins, she can empathize with parents who have twins and trying to juggle that. The twins are over there raising their arms in success. I think they're taking part of the credit. But having that experience that most people don't have and then using that to help parents is an amazing gift. One of the parents wrote about how kind and caring she was and how consistent she was with her child. Through all of his struggles, she was always there for him. And when a six-year-old can look you in the eye and say, "This is a teacher that has my back," that tells you something about who she is. She uses that same kindness with the parents, the staff and the students. But she also has a firm side to her that's very clear. When she's advocating for her students or something the school needs, she is relentless, relentless, which is a good thing, right? Because she sees something different and she's willing to fight for it. And to spend that kind of time getting to know what your children need and being their advocate against all odds, that's who Therese is. She spends that time and she spends that energy. I am sure if I were to ask her husband, she goes home exhausted at night because she puts her whole heart and soul into Bell's School and we are very, very proud to call her our Teacher of the Year. So, congratulations, Therese McMullin, Bell's Teacher of the Year. And next, for the first time, I get to introduce Burch's new Principal of the Year, Tricia Holmes.
Thank you so much for the warm welcome, I definitely appreciate it. So, it is both an honor and a privilege to speak on behalf of the Burch's Teacher of the Year, Miss Angelina Haslett. Angelina is joined here tonight by her husband Glenn, her very proud mama, her brother, sister-in-law, nieces, grandmom and aunt, and of course, her Burch's family. For those of you who may not know, Angelina is a product of the Washington Township Schools where as a student, I've heard on very good authority that she left her mark as a very hard worker with a huge heart and compassion for others. She made strong connections with those around her. She has and has always been a natural born leader and teacher. In her role as educator, Angelina has taken her skills to the next level. She goes beyond expectation daily to build relationships with students, families and staff. Research shows that strong relationships with teachers and school staff can dramatically enhance students' motivation, positive behavior and therefore promote learning. Angelina makes her classroom fun, comfortable and exciting with creative lessons that make her high academic standards achievable. Her students' growth is undeniable. Our learners, our families and our school are truly lucky to have Mrs. Haslett. As an instructional leader, Angelina has always been an active learner who is willing to share her knowledge and support her peers with implementation of new instructional tools and strategies. She's led district-wide sessions on a variety of technology programs. This year, Miss Haslett has chosen, has been chosen to be a facilitator of the District's Math for All grant. Her supervisor, Christine Garringer, shared how Miss Haslett is always willing to support the district, mentor colleagues in technology application and collaboration and always does so with the utmost humility. She served on various curriculum committees, including the District Math Committee, Burch's Positive School Culture and Climate Committee, Burch's Safety Committee, Parent Involvement Committee, Future Ready Committee and 504 Team. All this in addition to being grade-level leader and an amazing teacher in charge. She's also been involved in student-focused programming throughout her years, such as Get Set, Family Math, After School Tutoring, Bedtime Story Hour and Family Literacy Nights. Miss Haslett values collaboration, personal reflection and learning as an ongoing process for all, not just students. And she puts her beliefs into action. Mrs. Haslett is welcoming, thank you, compassionate about staff morale and is a role model, mentor and friend to all. Yesterday, as I passed Miss Haslett's door, I noticed that she had a sign that read, "Dreams plus hard work equals success." Angelina, I couldn't agree more. You've taken your dreams, you've worked hard and it's led you to an amazing level of success. This is so well-earned. Congratulations, Angelina Haslett, Teacher of the Year. It is now my pleasure to introduce my friend and colleague, Principal of Hurfield, Dr. Natae Switzer.
Good evening, everyone. I have the honor to present to you Hurfield Elementary's Teacher of the Year, Miss Linda, Mrs. Linda Venuto, she's crying already. Let me just first go, tell you that we love you before, before I, my speech, we, we do, we love you. Miss Linda Venuto has been a resident in Washington Township for the past twenty-two years along with her husband Michael and two children Nicholas and Danielle, who both attend Penn State University. She started off as part of the Hurfield Husky family as a student teacher and has been in her full-time position as BSI math coach for the past thirteen years. She holds a bachelor's and master's degree in teaching from Fairleigh Dickinson University. Mrs. Linda Venuto currently leads the Hurfield Future Acts Club, helping our students start their journey and giving back to our community through service. She is part of our Sunshine Committee where she plans elaborate parties and celebrations for teachers to engage in and activities. And she is also very active in our PTO fundraising. Throughout the pandemic, Mrs. Venuto collaborated with her colleagues to ensure that our students were able to continue to learn and grow. One of our parents here at Hurfield stated that to say that she has gone above and beyond is an understatement. Mrs. Venuto was flexible, patient and kind when working with her students and others as well, whether it's in person or through WebEx. Schedules were for always, forever changing and Mrs. Venuto always extended, extended grace to her families. Mrs. Venuto created a learning environment that was welcoming, interactive and engaging to both in-person and virtual learners. Students looked forward to and felt comfortable working with her and not afraid to make mistakes. Giving, she gives them the space to make mistakes, but yet to build their confidence in math. The relationship she builds with her students allows them to grow an appreciation for math rather than a fear. She is passionate about our students' growth and development and working with students in our, in our morning program. Mrs. Venuto, thank you so much for all that you do for Hurfield and for our students and our families. We love you and we appreciate you, thank you so much. I am very fortunate because I get to announce two, I get to announce two Educators of the Year. So, our second one is our Educational Support Person of the Year and that is Miss Anne, Mrs. Anne Marie Gilbert. We also love and appreciate you very much, we don't know what we would do without you. As our, as our educate, as our expert, our medical expert at Hurfield and throughout the district. So, Mrs. Anne Marie Gilbert is a resident of Washington Township and has been for thirty-five years. She and her husband Tom have raised three children, Tori, Becky, Tommy and Zach here in our community and have two beautiful grandchildren, Mark and Jules. Mrs. Gilbert is very happy to be able to serve as the nurse at Hurfield Elementary School in the community which she lives in. Nursing school has allowed Mrs. Gilbert to combine her passion for education and health to truly do what she loves. She loves coming to work each and every day during the pandemic. She really does have perfect attendance, I will tell you that. She's here every single day. For the past two years, she has reaffirmed her belief that school nurses work with not only students and their families, but also with the medical community, local and state health departments and our district and school community as well. Mrs. Gilbert is thankful and she's very appreciative for the vast knowledge and expertise of her district colleagues. Her district colleagues that they bring to our school district. Through constant professional collaboration, they have worked endlessly in maintaining a successful, healthy and happy learning environment for our school district. Mrs. Gilbert stated, "Working with teachers and staff at Hurfield is a privilege." Outside of her work in our district, Mrs. Gilbert serves as a trustee on the Washington Township Board of Education Foundation and she is also a member of the Washington Township Municipal Alliance. Mrs. Gilbert, thank you so much for all that you do, thank you for keeping us healthy. Even though it's a very daunting task, we appreciate it and sometimes we get really, really... We appreciate it, and sometimes we get really, really frustrated when you tell us the things that we don't want to hear, but we do appreciate it and we love you so much. Thank you so much. I would like to now introduce my friend and colleague, Mr. Gary Breen, who is the Principal of Thomas Jefferson Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to all of the winners here tonight and all of the amazing teachers and friends who have come out to support everyone here. It is my great pleasure to introduce and recognize Mrs. Stacy Sheridan as the Thomas Jefferson Teacher of the Year. Stacy is equally embarrassed to be standing here, just like our Bell's friend. She does. So Mrs. Sheridan has been teaching for 17 years. She's here with her husband Bob, her daughter Ashley, her parents, and her dear friend Chris. And I know your son Bobby is here in spirit with us. He's at school, or he's at work, work in Florida. So Mrs. Sheridan is, oh, she also has one of her students in the very back came, one of her kindergarten students came to recognize her tonight. So hi, Laney. So Mrs. Sheridan is an invaluable member of the TJ staff and an innovative leader in our special education department. Her ability to build strong relationships with her young learners has made her so successful in this role. Back a few years ago, I believe it was 2016, when TJ welcomed Full Day Kindergarten into our building, Mrs. Sheridan and her co-teaching partner Matt Loyakona, who were teaching fifth grade for many years, came to me and said, "I think we'd like to teach kindergarten." Well, why not? And they were amazing, a team at kindergarten. Since then, Stacy stayed on, and she now is teaching our LD, our self-contained section in kindergarten, and has been amazing at that role. So once she began teaching that world of unique kindergarten students, she told me that she found her people. So she's now with her people, and she continues making that difference in the lives of the kindergarten students. Her husband Bob's told me a few times that I can never move Stacy out of kindergarten. And he said, and I think it's a quote, "Kindergarten Stacy is so much nicer at home than fifth grade's." Do I lie, Bob? More than once, he's told me that. So I will never move Stacy from kindergarten. So she works with a variety of learners with very different and unique needs. Student engagement is always high and often involves movement, art, and song. I didn't know until Stacy showed up that there's an annual Talk Like a Pirate Day. So Stacy dresses up in pirate garb and, you know, all day, it's, your favorite letter is Rrr. So she sees the ability in each of her learners and not the disability, which brings them to her classroom. Her young learners have consistently made strong educational and emotional growth under her care. She's a strong collaborator. She works with four amazing professional staff members to plan for student success. Together, they've created a warm, loving place for students to grow and learn. So thank you to those. She's one of those few amazing teachers who truly have the gift of teaching. She rarely sleeps and is constantly looking for ways to inspire students. Usually that involves an Amazon package coming to school or something delivered from Disney to help her do what she needs to do in the classroom. She helps her students find joy in every day, and it's always a room I love to visit because of the fun going on there. For these reasons and a list too numerous to mention here, I am proud to recognize Stacy Sheridan as the Thomas Jefferson School Teacher of the Year. At this time, I'd like to introduce my colleague, Mr. Charles Zimmerman, the Wedgwood Principal.
Thank you, Mr. Breen. Good evening and congratulations to all of our district's teachers and educational service professionals of the year. Our community is a better place to live because of the work that you do each and every day. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce Lisa Warrington, Wedgwood Schools 2021-2022 Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Warrington is in her eighth year as the Special Education Teacher assigned to our school's intermediate self-contained language and learning disability classroom. In her 17 years of service to our school district, Mrs. Warrington has held a number of roles, including lunch assistant, one-to-one aide, and a special education teacher in both the in-class resource and self-contained settings. In 2014, Mrs. Warrington assumed the role of in-class resource teacher supporting learners in Debbie Durham and Marion Garten's classrooms before accepting her current position following a December retirement. Some may be surprised to know that Mrs. Warrington holds a culinary degree from the Academy of Culinary Arts at Maze Landing. Some of you now feel cheated that Mrs. Warrington has ever cooked for you. I will let them talk to you about that later. Following a stint in the food industry, she earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in elementary education with a specialization in students with disabilities from St. Joseph's University. She's a loving, St. Joe's in the house. There you are, Mr. Anderson, yes. She's a loving wife to her husband Chris and mother to two daughters, Chris and Amanda, all of whom are here tonight, along with extended family and friends to celebrate Mrs. Warrington. That's them celebrating over there. That was the, there, they just did that celebration thing there. Mrs. Warrington's recognition as our school's Teacher of the Year is timely for many reasons. Her assignment is relatively unique within our school. The challenge of planning, teaching, assessing, and assisting students with disabilities on three separate grade levels is just a regular day for her. She presents an individualized approach for each of her students in her classroom, and that is no small feat. And all the while, she has a significant impact on our school's culture as the co-chair of Wedgwood Sunshine Committee and as a co-facilitator of our Friends Helping Friends Club. Throughout the pandemic, our students did really such a great job of masking and keeping physical distance and learning in a variety of settings, but those can be really big asks for students with disabilities. And Mrs. Warrington has been a tireless champion for her students during this time, rising to meet their differing educational and emotional needs. And her students know Mrs. Warrington as someone who will always have their back, as someone who will fight for them until the very end. She's a teacher who connects with students, who knows them as individuals, and celebrates the things that make them unique. And those powerful connections point back to Lisa's true, secret superpower. She cares more than the average human. She cares and gives and loves and worries and laughs with her whole heart. And her students are made to feel so important to her because they're her students, and she loves them in the way that we would want all of our own children to be nurtured by a teacher with patience, understanding, and a focus on fostering academic, emotional, social, and behavioral growth. And all the while, she makes learning fun and interesting and reminds her students, and even me, to take the time to stop and dance when things get difficult. Wedgwood School is so very grateful to have Lisa Warrington represent the very best of us as our 2021-2022 Teacher of the Year. And now it is my pleasure to introduce my friend and colleague, often imitated but never duplicated, Mr. Raymond Anderson, Principal of Whitman School.
Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to be here tonight in the company of such esteemed educators as we honor our district's Teachers of the Year for the 2021-22 school year. So congratulations to all of you on such an outstanding accomplishment in your careers. And I'm looking for Frau Graham. Is she here? Ich möchte auf Frau Graham von der High School gratulieren. Das ist wirklich gute Arbeit, meine Freundin. Endlich verdient, ne? Whitman Elementary School, however, is very proud to recognize one of our first-grade teachers, Mrs. Connie Donardo, as our Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Donardo completed her bachelor's degree as a double major in elementary education and sociology at Rowan University. She also earned a master's degree in the art of teaching from Mary Grove College in Michigan. Mrs. Donardo has been teaching first and second grade for 25 years. She is a respected member of the Whitman faculty who truly creates an excitement and love of learning in her classroom. Very recently, I got to visit, actually observe, Mrs. Donardo's classroom, where she, on the spot, challenged me to write a story, just like the kids were working on, on how to teach somebody how to do something. So of course, given a challenge, we're going to do it. And I had to go in and I did some German with the kids, and I was so impressed with the students. They were so attentive, they were so interested, and they had such good questions. And the rapport that Mrs. Donardo has with these children, always, but specifically this year, is unparalleled, truly. The classroom environment that she has established enables students to feel comfortable, to take a chance, to go out on a limb, to ask questions, and to read their stories to the entire class. It was notable how much her students were growing and learning every day. Elementary supervisor Christine Garringer shared that each year, Mrs. Donardo establishes a unique learning community where every child feels valued, cared for, and appreciated. She celebrates their unique differences and fosters the development of positive character traits. The students genuinely care for one another, treating each other with respect and kindness. Her enthusiasm and love for teaching permeates throughout the school, inspiring others to strive to do their best and to attain rigorous goals. Connie works very well with all of her students. The children describe Mrs. Donardo as kind, helps us when we need it, and she teaches us diagrams. Six years old, right? Knew what a diagram was, very beautiful thing. One student noted how much he likes the vowel song A-E-I-O-U. And I told Mrs. Donardo I was going to ask her to sing it tonight, but I'm not going to do it to you. I've heard you sing, and it's very good. But she always makes the classroom very happy with her smiles and even the decorations in her room. One of her colleagues described Mrs. Donardo as someone whom he has consistently seen building meaningful relationships, connecting positively with students and staff, and someone who truly cares about our school. Mrs. Donardo has been a dedicated mentor to the tomorrow's teacher program at Washington Township High School. She has worked with many of those high school students over the years to show them what it is like to teach, care for, and help our students grow to be good citizens. Mrs. Donardo works well with children of all levels due to her patience, her diligence, and her dedication to their success. Mrs. Donardo did a formidable job when we moved into the remote learning, which hats off to all the teachers here who moved into remote learning and did such, let's give them a round of applause because it was nothing short of amazing, and all of the assistants who were there helping and everybody who was involved in that process. But going on to Mrs. Donardo's lessons, you know, had 20-some kids in front of her as she's trying to work on maybe some vowel sounds when we have someone wants to hold the dog up. We had another one chowing down the, you know, pop tarts or whatever, and she had it together, and it was in complete control. And being able to watch that was, you know, already thought she was awesome, but to see that in action was outstanding. So Mrs. Donardo is joined tonight by her husband, Mike, and her daughters, Gia and Adriana, who proudly share this moment with their wife and mom. Mrs. Donardo enjoys watching the development of her students into adults and professionals. Some of her earliest students are now even her colleagues at Whitman. Mrs. Donardo takes great pride in creating lessons and activities that are memorable and that make her students want to come to school every day. She especially loves to hear when a child really likes one of the lessons or activities that she is working on with them. Mrs. Donardo is also an active member of the Whitman community. She regularly attends evening functions, including our candy bar bingo, our ice cream night at Brewster's, and has even presented to parents at the stepping up to first grade nights. A few years back, Mrs. Donardo even ran our school-wide talent show, Whitman's Got Talent, which was a huge undertaking and a very big success. It was a lot of fun, without a doubt. So in closing, Whitman School is very proud to salute and to recognize Mrs. Donardo as our 2021-22 Teacher of the Year. I would now like to introduce the Principal of Bunker Hill Middle School, Mr. Mike Distillio.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I appreciate it. I also want to echo my sentiments to all the professionals and teachers here who are being recognized for their accomplishments and their, it's pretty much a lifetime achievement award for all of you, and thank you for everything that you do. As the proud Bunker Hill Principal, I'd like to take this opportunity to announce to you the 2021-22 Bunker Hill Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Heather Finn. I like how everybody that cheers is so well-composed. It's great. So I would like to, you know, also make a recognition to her family that is here, Chris, her husband Killian, her son Kenna, her daughter and her mom Gail. They are here tonight, and also the Bunker Hill faithful that so reveres Mrs. Finn as So a little bit about Heather. She is a sixth and seventh-grade teacher at Bunker Hill, and she actually welcomes the opportunity to teach both levels. So she not only understands the vertical alignment that happens with the curriculum, but also have the fortune to loop with some of her students to have that continuity with them. Talking about Ms. Finn in the classroom first, Ms. Finn is incredibly engaging. She teaches her class by having a very collaborative learning environment, and most importantly, she is an absolute master of engaging in the feedback loop with students. So just a funny thing is, you know, typically, Dr. Moselli and I, we walk the halls, we go into classrooms all the time, and I might need to talk to a student or ask Ms. Finn a question or something to that effect. When I go into her room, I can't find her because she's always sitting at a table with a student, and I have to look for her to be able to see. It's not that she's in front of the room, she's in there teaching and learning with the students, and that's an incredible feat. And you're always, Ms. Finn, you're always giving the students feedback and helping them to make adjustments in their own learning. Heather understands that the true essence of achievement is the ability to help students showcase what they know over time rather than a snapshot of that one moment. And she understands that, how to help them answer questions for a particular unit of study by engaging them in discourse and to take a critical eye and viewing learning and not grades as the most paramount thing to accomplish. So outside the classroom, Ms. Finn is a leader, a unifier, she's a culture builder, and she truly embodies the notion of a Bunker Hill Bulldog, which is that a life of purpose is one that is rooted in the service of others. And because she is so excellent in the classroom, she is the advisor of Future Acts, and children actually flock to her club because they like to be of service to others, but most importantly, they like to work with Ms. Finn. So like I said, she's the advisor of the Future Acts, which is connected to Rotary International and as a middle school club of philanthropy. So Ms. Finn welcomes her students to join the club. They participate in everything, such as, especially in the fall leading up to the holidays, food banks, holiday meals, Giving Tree, Washington Township Helping Hands Hoagie Sale, and toy drives. And so then in the off-season, she also spends time helping the students foster an appreciation for our campus and then maintaining a connection with Ronald McDonald House and charities. Her efforts are endless, and it is all for the kids and the community at Bunker Hill. So Ms. Finn leads the way in terms of service, and through her service-oriented clubs, she learns a lot about the kids that she serves. And when she learns about people in the community, she stops at nothing to immediately put in an opportunity for a fundraiser to help support people through tough times. She's an amazing philanthropist, and what children and even staff see in Ms. Finn is that she's a true teacher. So a true teacher is not just someone who's brilliant in literature or math or any other subject matter. The true teacher is someone who models professional subject matter, the true teacher is someone who models professionalism inside and outside the classroom walls. The true teacher is someone who is other-centered, and the byproduct of that connection is that the children readily absorb the teacher's content because they just flat-out feel loved and appreciated by her. The beauty of Ms. Finn's teaching is that her skills and her work of service is that she has actually no idea how much she stands out, and she actually has no idea how much she's revered by everyone at Bunker Hill. Bunker Hill is so fortunate to have Ms. Finn as a teacher, and if I was beginning a new school, one of the first people I would select would be Ms. Heather Finn. Congratulations, Ms. Finn, so very proud of you. And at this time, I would like to introduce my good friend, Ms. Teresa Petrowski, principal of Chestnut Ridge Middle School.
Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you the 2021-22 Teacher of the Year for Chestnut Ridge Middle School, Senor Scott Mitchell. Scott, we've been together in several schools and in several roles, and when I learned that I was going to be at Chestnut Ridge, I realized we were both home. And the more I work with you, and the more I watch you, the more I know that you truly, truly deserve this honor. So, I wanted to take a moment before I read what I wrote to just say to you that if I had to pick one word to describe you, I was thinking about what that would be, and I decided the one word would be gravity. Interesting, gravity. He's not a science teacher, he's a world language teacher. But the truth is that when you walk by Senor Mitchell's classroom, you are pulled in immediately. The minute I walk down the hall, there's always something exciting going on in his classroom, and I have to go in and see it. One of the very first days of school, I went in, and the students were running from side to side of the room picking whether they liked something on the board or they didn't like it, and they had to keep switching sides. And that's the other part of the word gravity. Not only do you get sucked into the classroom because you want to see what's going on, but you also, when you get in the classroom, you can't take your eyes off of him. He is innovating and captivating with the students, they're all watching him. He could have 30 students in his classroom, he could have two students in his classroom, they're all watching and learning and listening. And one of the first observations I did recently with you, they were just learning the alphabet, and they had it like down, and it was the first week you had the students, and I couldn't believe how much they had learned in one week in Mr. Mitchell's classroom. So, I chose gravity because you draw everyone in, not only into your classroom, but into your learning. And the other reason, there is one more, is the gravity you share with our staff and our families. Whenever I would see Mr. Mitchell, he's talking with students, he's laughing with staff, he's collaborating with teachers, and he's helping students and families be the best possible versions of themselves. So, I hope that you'll share a little bit of that gravity and that feeling with me tonight as we celebrate Mr. Mitchell as Teacher of the Year. And Mr. Mitchell is here tonight with his wife, and his mom, and his brother, and his supervisor. So, welcome, thank you for being here. Mr. Mitchell is genuinely an expert in his field. He builds confidence by giving accurate feedback and encouragement to his students. He builds interest into his lessons with the use of humor. In Scott's class, the students do not only learn the language, but they learn the culture, the climates, the geography, and the traditions associated with the Spanish-speaking countries all over the world. You can always find Mr. Mitchell collaborating with colleagues, students, and families to create that positive school climate feel of respect and success. Scott encourages students to share their stories, to use one another to work harder and stronger, to build relationships with everyone in our Razorback family. Whenever you walk by Mr. Mitchell's room, you can feel that gravity. Mr. Mitchell demonstrates leadership and innovation both inside and outside the classroom. As a basketball coach, Mr. Mitchell demands the best out of his students, the best on the court, but most importantly, the best out of the court, or off the court, basketball speaking. So, when he works with his students on the court, they're always working to be their best, the best technique, the best shooting, the best plays, but outside of that court, he demonstrates sportsmanship, kindness, compassion. If a student needs something on his team, he's there for them. If a family needs something on his team, he's there for them. He encourages his students to be outstanding citizens in our school and community. Mr. Mitchell has so many fans, I just chose a few comments from the Teacher of the Year letters to share with you. Mr. Mitchell is so fun and energetic, he makes being a student and learning so much fun. Senor Mitchell has a lot of passion for his students. He even has a super cute llama on his pen that he got from Peru. We all love being in Mr. Mitchell's class. I'm sure you can see why Mr. Mitchell was chosen as our Teacher of the Year. Some teachers teach in education because they like their subjects. Mr. Mitchell teaches because he loves children. He makes a difference every day. He teaches all of his students based on their interests and skill sets, and allows them to rise to their highest level and maximizes every student's educational limits. Congratulations, Senor Mitchell. We are so proud of you, but I am personally proud of you to see you grow day after day after day in your role at Chestnut Ridge Middle School. Congratulations to our 21-22 Teacher of the Year. And it is my honor to introduce the Assistant Principal of Orchard Valley Middle School, and very likely the only person I know that's ever been in a movie, Mr. Justin Avery.
Thank you very much. All right, good evening, everyone. I have the esteemed honor to, or really privilege, to honor two excellent staff members from Orchard Valley Middle School, and the first is our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Melissa Bamaka. Ms. Bamaka is accompanied by her husband, Christian, her son Shane, and Parker, mom and dad, brothers and sisters, friends, and OV Panther family. Melissa Bamaka is a math teacher at Orchard Valley Middle School. Over her tenure, she has taught basic skills math, inclusion math, advanced math, and general math to seventh-grade students. Her co-teachers over the years have referred to her as a mathematical magician because she works miracles with struggling students. Her pedagogical practice makes her an exemplary teacher because she can reach even the most challenging of students. As a seventh-grade math teacher, Ms. Bamaka meets numerous Orchard Valley students as they progress through middle school. She strives to deliver fresh, fun, and engaging lessons while teaching her students math. Most recently, she was observed delivering in escape room math lesson with her students. Although the students were solving linear equations, they were actively collaborating, problem-solving, and having fun. This is the type of learning atmosphere Mrs. Bamaka creates. Consequently, her students score well on the state assessments and move forward into more challenging math courses in high school. Mrs. Bamaka has the most school spirit of all OVMS teachers. During the academic pandemic, sorry, excuse me, and remote instruction, she was constantly researching ways for her staff and students to connect. She was the first teacher to organize a car parade in our district, as well as create a stump, the Staff Virtual Day, create virtual scavenger hunts, and create staff versus student flipgrid challenges. The result of these efforts were the connections and relationships the staff were able to maintain with our students throughout the quarantine. In the following year, during the remote hybrid learning time, she vigorously worked to develop student-centered displays to increase morale and awareness around social justice issues plaguing our society. Consequently, she has become an active member of our school security and safety climate team, where she helps develop lessons, activities, and events that we implement school-wide to support an inclusive atmosphere where all students and staff feel valued, supported, and belong. Mrs. Bamaka is an active member of Orchard Valley community, she is the co-advisor of the Yearbook Club, Student Council, and is one of the seventh-grade community leaders. Through her involvement in these activities, she has been able to capture and share the fun of middle school. She has planned and implemented events such as Plump the Turkey, organizing staff to be in the same costume for Halloween, organizing a secret Santa exchange, and other Spirit Week activities. All her efforts foster the feeling of family, and we, the OVMS staff, feel like a family. Mrs. Bamaka has excellent rapport with students and staff. When staff member recalled her first day of work, Mrs. Bamaka approached her and personally welcomed her to the building. She offered to help and/or support her in any way possible. This is the same approach Mrs. Bamaka has towards her students. Her students know she won't give up on them. Additionally, Mrs. Bamaka is a natural leader with exemplary teaching skills. It is for all those reasons I would rec... Well, it's for all those reasons, Mrs. Bamaka is our 2021-22 Teacher of the Year. And I have the dubious privilege of also honoring a educational support extravaganz... I can't think of a great word, but, uh, social worker. No, no, I know a title. I wanted to give something magical like everybody else. I was trying. All right, but I messed up, I apologize. But Mrs. Lauren White. All right, Mrs. White is joined today by her husband, her two daughters, who are not here tonight, but we are still recognizing them. Kayla's a freshman at Manhattan College, and Olivia is at field hockey practice. I know the feeling. So, Mrs. Lauren White has been anchor of the Child Study Team at Orchard Valley Middle School. Not only does she complete her work as a social worker on the team, but she also serves as a team leader scheduling all CST meetings for the school, families, and students. Over the past five years, Mrs. White has had several new team members, each needing training, support, and help to learn the process and procedures of Washington Township. Each time she receives a new teammate, she welcomed and accepted them immediately and without reservation. And I have to attest to that of Ms. Bamaka and Ms. White, as I am new to Orchard Valley family, they've welcomed me with open arms, so I've experienced that firsthand. Each time knowing how much time it takes to train someone new, she smiled and moved forward positively. An example of this positivity and resilience was demonstrated at the start of this year. As she drove to her first day, her teammate called her and said, "They just reassigned you to another middle school within a district for the year." Without hesitation, Mrs. White rose to the challenge and has been helping the substitute along the entire time, as well pushing our CST team to excellence. Ms. White is currently the only social worker among three middle schools with an average population of 550 students per school. She is currently in charge of completing all the social histories for new referrals and reevaluations. Consequently, it makes her attendance at most CST meetings with families across three middle schools vital. The time and care she takes when collecting social history information from parents and guardians during evaluation phase is exemplary. She demonstrates kindness, understanding, reassurance, and acceptance, which allows parents and guardians to be vulnerable enough to share their child and family's story. The ability is truly a gift. Mrs. White's connection with students she case manages is also outstanding. She knows each of her students personally and takes time out of her day to meet individually with them throughout the year. Specifically, this year, Mrs. White has taken an eighth-grader student under her wing. She provides a quiet and safe environment where she can help him with his science work seamlessly and without distractions, all while reinforcing positive behaviors. Mrs. White is the case manager for all out-of-district special education student placements. Consequently, she serves as a liaison between the out-of-school district placement, the school district administrators, and central office. Case managing out-of-district students often requires time and energy beyond the scope of the day to ensure the transportation, academic, social, and emotional needs of the students are met. Mrs. White is an advocate for all education students. She believes with all her being, students can be successful. She fights to ensure students are at the least restrictive environment while also maintaining the supports needed to be successful. Her diligence, dedication, and commitment ensure all timeliness dictated by special education law are always met. Additionally, she willingly shares her expertise with her colleagues to assist in the implementation of student IEPs. Mrs. White's dedication to Orchard Valley Middle School community is not limited to special education. Mrs. White is an active member of our school community demonstrated throughout her acts with the Art Club, Social Justice Club, and a member of school security, safety, and climate team. She also volunteered as a chaperone in many of our school-based activities in understanding the need for middle school students to have a safe and positive space for all after-school activities. Ms. White is an amazing member of our school community, team, and family. This honor is well-deserved, which is why we celebrate Mrs. White, our Orchard Valley Middle School Educational Support Service Professional of the Year. Now, I have the privilege to introduce Mr. John Savarice, Washington Township High
Thank you, Mr. Avery. May I have my two recipients, Ms. Jill Graham and Mrs. Candace Maraz. Usually, our Executive Assistant Principal, Mr. Strout, would be here tonight to recognize the Teachers of the Year on this evening. So, when he asked me to present in his absence, I was honored to be the person to acknowledge these two outstanding teachers, and I consider colleagues and dear friends. The process of electing these recipients is often difficult. We have so many qualified teachers here at the high school, and these two are so most deserving. Our first recipient is Jill Graham. Jill graduated from Georgetown University, majoring in German and minoring in Spanish. She's married to her husband, Scott, and she has three children, Kyle, Mitchell, and Brett. She has been a respected teacher in the district for 14 years. She has taught both Honors III and Honors IV German. She's the German club advisor and is also the honors coordinator for the high school. A few years back, I was the administrative liaison to the Foreign Language Department. No, I don't speak any German, but I was fortunate to see Jill firsthand and exemplary how she is in the classroom. She connects with students in so many ways and makes them feel welcome and included in her class. As a committee was reviewing the essays, we noticed that one student wrote three separate essays, and apparently, there was an unlimited number of reasons why Mrs. Graham was so deserving of this award. It was impressive to read how many ways she touched the lives of her students at the high school, whether she had them in class or not. She was recognized as being kind, compassionate, inspiring. Jill is an all-around caring teacher, the teacher that goes way out of her way to build that special rapport with her students. Her colleagues commend her for her compassionate demeanor and for going above and beyond both in and out of the classroom. Over the years, Jill has traveled abroad with her students so that they may have those most memorable high school experiences. Mrs. Graham is very deserving of this award, and we're extremely fortunate to have Jill on our staff at Washington Township High School. We thank you, we love you. Our second recipient of this prestigious award is Ms. Candace Maraz. Our second recipient of this prestigious award is Ms. Candace Maraz. Candace holds a master's degree in school administration from Roman University, as well as a bachelor's of science degree with an emphasis in both biology and English from Randolph-Macon College. She's married to her husband Vince and has three children, Gavin, Hannah, and Madison, who believe her here, all in the district. For those of you who don't know, she's the daughter of Eileen and Bob Abbott, who proudly served on the Board of Education for many years. Candace? She has been in the district for 16 years as a 9th grade teacher. In September of 2019, she became the high school ELA interventionist and also serves as an advisor for the Renaissance Club. Ms. Maraz is known as the teacher that always has a smile on her face. She's caring and supportive to each and every student. She makes sure the classroom is comfortable learning environment for students, and they are not afraid to ask any questions or participate in classroom activities. In reading the essays submitted on her behalf, there was one common factor that stood out. It's the ability Candace has to install self-confidence in the people, a belief of a can-do attitude that so many struggling students lack. She has the exceptional ability to motivate her classes and give them the tools they need for success. My own daughter, Ms. Maraz, in class her senior year, I asked her what special quality she brought to the student body. She said Ms. Maraz was outgoing and always willing to help anyone in need. She was so focused on education, she took time to make sure everyone understood what they were learning. Ms. Maraz had a huge impact on her students' accomplishments. Candace also dedicates her time to the high school by chaperoning extracurricular activities, such as the senior trip, and she was even lucky to have me as a bus partner last year. She kept me in line. Candace is very deserving of this award, and she should be recognized as one of the finest teachers here at Washington Township High School. So, here is Candace Maraz. I would like to congratulate both these amazing teachers, as well as everyone else in the audience here as amazing Teachers of the Year. You are the reason why we are Township proud. Thank you.
Thank you so much. What a great evening. On behalf of the board and administration, to all those who educate, lead, and support our students each and every day, thank you. Thank you for showing up. Thank you for your endurance. Thank you for your patience, and thank you for coming to work each and every day with your A-game. These have been some challenging times, but you rose above, and we thank you. Thank you for a great night. I believe we have some refreshments. We'll allow your families and your colleagues to have some photo opportunities, and then the board will continue with its regular business. So again, thank you for coming this evening, and let's give another hand to our recipients.
If we could get all the honorees up to the front of the stage. I know Jan Gill would like to take a picture of all of the honorees tonight if you can come up front. And again, refreshments are being served in the cafeteria to my left, your right, where you can gather and take more pictures and enjoy each other's company. Thank you all for coming out.
If I could have my honorees up here, I'm gonna have six people sit and eight people stand. Yeah, you can either sit or stand in the front. All our honorees up to the front, please. Who am I missing? Who? I'm missing two people. Who am I missing? Where are my honorees at? I'm missing two of you. Here they come. Here comes one. Yeah. Lisa. Where's Lisa? Lisa, the first shall be last, the last shall be first.
It's okay.
Alright, good job. No, you did good. I'll zoom in. Hot shot. They have a nice little reception for you. You wanna get another? I don't remember my parents.
...
I'm sorry about that roll call thing. I remembered, I'm like, oh, actually, we don't do it here. It's very easy then.
Hello.
Yeah, you have to almost like put it on your mouth.
Yeah.
While, while we're waiting for everyone to settle in, we will hear a report from Catherine Carey. This is too far away from me, giving a report on school community relations.
Thank you. Members of the Washington Township High School Student Council encourage community members to think spring and plan on joining in the fun of the fifteenth annual Washington Township Night at Citizens Bank Park on Tuesday, May third, two thousand and twenty-two. The Philadelphia Phillies will take on the Texas Rangers. First pitch is scheduled for six forty-five P M. A portion of all tickets will benefit the W T H S Student Council. Tickets range from seventeen to thirty-eight dollars and are located in the outfield, pavilion, and pavilion deck based on availability. Washington Township fans interested in purchasing tickets for the game can purchase tickets online at www dot Phillies dot com slash W T H S promo code W T H S. We extend our congratulations to Washington Township High School Science Teacher Amy Carpinelli, who has been selected to participate as an Advanced Placement or A P Exam Reader for the two thousand and twenty-two A P Physics One exam. Carpinelli will join other high school teachers and college faculty with the online grading for Educational Testing Service, or E T S, of Princeton in Kansas City, Missouri, from June second through eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. In addition to scoring the exams, a diverse group of A P readers are given the opportunity to exchange ideas and network with faculty, teachers, and A P Development Committee members and become familiar with the A P scoring standards and how to apply that rubric consistently. The Washington Township Visual Arts Department will host District Art Night on Thursday, April seventh, from six thirty to eight thirty P M. at the Washington Township High School. District Art Night annually draws thousands to the school to view displays of K to twelve student artwork, as well as to witness student artist demonstrations. The W T H S Chapter of the National Art Honor Society will be sponsoring a fine art and craft sale and will be having face painting activities for kids in attendance. District Art Night admission is free and open to the public. Just a reminder that the Washington Township Education Foundation is still seeking golfers and sponsors for its twenty-fifth annual Golf Classic, which will be hosted at White Oaks Country Club on Friday, June twenty-fourth. The W T E F has moved the tee time to noon. If you're interested in signing up, please contact W T E F President Charlie Dowd at eight five six five three four four two six eight or via district email at c dowd at W T P S dot org. And from Dr. Alexander, the Department of DEE B will conduct a community conversation on March thirtieth from six to seven in our Instructional Media Center located in Washington Township High School. This will be one of numerous conversations that we'll have with our W T P S community partners. Each one will allow us to have a deeper understanding of the expectations of all interested partners for our community, your concerns, and what you feel you could contribute to the W T P S community's strengthening. We will use the information gleaned from these discussions to improve the effectiveness of our work within the W T P S community. We cannot guarantee that the discussion will result in the creation of new programs or policies, however, promise to contact you with the information gathered to inform you of how we intend to utilize it. We hope that you can join us. If so, please R S V P using the link in the DEE B newsletter, which can be found on our website. The DEE B portal is a living environment that was created to expand along with you. Our objective is to gain a better understanding of your objectives in order to share materials that are relevant to our W T P S community and needs. Kindly contribute by clicking the link through the DEE B newsletter. And finally, if you're looking to join the W T P S Equity Council, please don't miss the second cohort enrollment, and again, that link can be found within the newsletter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carey. Can I please have a motion to approve the letters of discipline under correspondence?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the minutes from January, uh, February, excuse me.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone with old business that they'd like to bring to the board?
I have old business, really. Is this on? Yeah, okay. Okay, so I know that usually meetings are reported in the work session, but this one was in between sessions. Um, I went to the C P A G meeting, so I did tell them that I was gonna report out to the board and to the public. Um, so C, C P A G, in case people didn't know, is Special Education Parent Advisory Group. It was more active prior to COVID, but it's now kind of restructuring because COVID changed the game for everybody. So I didn't realize this, each district is required to have a group like this. There's representatives from the Special Education Department, as well as coordinators from SPAN, which is a parent advocacy, I can't talk, advocacy network. Um, Dr. Alexander and I were the newbies. Right now, the goal is to get as many parents as possible involved and understand what C P A G is and does. Uh, from what I understood, it's not a place where parents go to have a back and forth about specific issues, but instead, it's a group that holds trainings and provides information and resources to parents in the district with kids who have special needs, including I E Ps and five oh fours. There will be a survey going out district-wide to all families that will be an interest survey to determine what parents would like to get out of a group such as this. The plan for long term is to develop a parent advisory board that will then determine things like trainings and activities to better support special needs families in the district. We are talking about the importance of representation from all of the schools, as well as understanding transition from elementary to middle to high school because that can be really hard on students who have special needs um, and the level of support that parents need for those issues. So it seems like in the past, advertising has been a little bit hard, so we're gonna try to focus on getting the word out to establish that parent advisory group for C P A G, so be on the lookout for a survey so that we can find ways to involve as many interested parents as possible.
Great, thank you. I know sometimes it's, it's not a lot of parents at that meeting, even though there's a lot of interest in it. So the parent advisory group is a great idea. I guess the principals will try and help us find people from each school.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like, like, and I feel like with COVID, everyone was so overwhelmed, and special needs parents particularly, I feel like that, that was where the hardest hit area was. And that's where kids struggled the most, so there was a lot of people that felt overwhelmed, and I think attending any extra meetings during that time probably wasn't feasible for a lot of people. So it's gonna be a matter of trying to create a board of parents who are willing to look for what trainings would be helpful for, for parents and for families, and support too, because those parents need an awful lot of support, and it's, even in a big district, it's not always easy to know where to look for other parents in the same boat.
Good, thank you. Thank you for the report out. Any other items of old business?
I don't know if this is old or new, um, but about the musical at Orchard Valley.
I guess since it's over.
It's over, it's old business. Um, just wanna congratulate the staff and crew of Orchard Valley's production of Matilda. It was outstanding. I went Friday and Saturday night. Um, and it was just, just amazing, first of all, to watch him be able to perform without masks more traditionally was really special. Um, and it was just the work those kids put into it and the staff. Um, Ms. Lesso, Ms. Campanini, Mr. Burke, and Ms. Walls. Um, it's countless hours, and it's really appreciated, and I can't thank them enough. It was outstanding.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Anything else? Okay, can I have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we have, I don't know if we have yellow cards here, but is there anyone from the public wishing to speak? Where, where are they?
In the lobby.
Oh, they're in the lobby. Um, Ron, you can come up. The first public comment section is just for voting items on the agenda, then there's a second one. So if anyone else needs a yellow card, they're, they're out there, but there's so few people here, you could just raise your hand.
Considering what went on over at Orchard Valley and what the public doesn't even know, because we still don't know what went on, uh, to be honest with you, it would seem that that wouldn't be a, a great move at this point to put him in, in that position. Um, you're talking about five days a week. I would hope that it's gonna be five days a week. Getting in there seven forty-five, leaving it, you know, four fifteen, four thirty. Uh, I would think that that's gonna be quite a demand for a, a man who's gone through what I consider a pretty serious medical situation. So that's one concern. And the other concern is, in relation, and nothing to do with Mr. Goldschmidt, but it seems like the public has no idea what went on at Orchard Valley, that this principal, who I had warned about numerous times at public meetings, just disappears in the night, so to speak, and we don't have any, not that we need to know what her story is, but we do need to know, is there gonna be a new principal in September? Is she coming back? I, I think, you know, the taxpayers, the, the residents, the, the parents and the students and the teachers should have some, uh, idea as to what is going to happen in the future as far as the leadership there, okay? Uh, there might be confidentiality issues in relation to the principal, you know, that you can't discuss. I don't know why, but that, that, that might happen. But I think if she's not coming back, there had to be something extremely wrong there other than just kids having to take off their shoes one time to go to the bathroom or something. I, I think there, there had to be other issues that must've come to the front. I'm, you know, I'm just guessing, all right? Because I couldn't see anybody getting fired for that particular reason if she is indeed fired. But whatever the reason is, uh, I guess we don't have a right to know, but we do have a right to know what the future of the, of the building is going to be, I think. And I think that that's because no one on the board or no one in the administration wants to own up to the mistake that was made there. Thank you.
Ron, I'll go in reverse order. Um, first of all, I appreciate the fact that you would recognize that there are always confidentiality issues. You, as a longtime member of the union, as a rep, I know that you know that. Um, naturally, when the time comes for us to communicate, we certainly will. Uh, we, I agree with you one hundred percent. We're just not at that point yet, uh, but we're close to being at that point as to where it is that we need to be. Um, uh, important to note that, uh, that, you know, things are, as it relates to the interim position of Mr. Goldschmidt, we're really, quite frankly, uh, very fortunate to have his availability to us as a retiree because that lessens the burden and the also impact of the domino effect of elevating people, which ultimately reaches down into a teaching position that directly impacts kids. So to have somebody come in as an interim that's a retiree is always the best situation that we're in. I can't comment on Mr. Goldschmidt's medical conditions, as you well know, um, but, uh, we're excited to have him on board to bring us forward to what will be a new chapter at Orchard Valley Middle School. And, uh, and that's really the length of what I can mention at this particular point in time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a, a motion to approve the three, items under a report of the superintendent?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Genovi?
He said yes.
Dr. Ellis? Oh, he's not here, sorry. Mrs. Galen Arrow?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Halpin?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Ms. Cozempel?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to instruction, item two, motion to approve item number one under instruction.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, question? Seeing none, roll call.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Genovi?
Mr. Genovi. Yeah.
Mrs. Galen Arrow?
Yes.
Ms. Halpin?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cozempel?
Yes, motion carries. Under Student Activities and Services, motion to approve items one and two.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion, questions? Roll call.
Ms. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Genovi?
Student Activities. Yes.
Mrs. Galen Arrow?
Yes.
Ms. Halpin?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Cozempel?
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Under Human Resources, motion to approve items one through twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Uh, Mr. Genovi has to abstain on twenty-three, I think he knows that because he was not an executive, so. Roll call, please.
Mr. Genovi?
You're up.
Abstain on number twenty-three, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Galen Arrow?
Yes.
Ms. Helfin?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Ms. Cozempel?
Yes, motion carries. Motion to approve items one through twenty-one and twenty-three through twenty-eight under finance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Galen Arrow?
Yes.
Ms. Helfin?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Genovi?
You're up. Finance, ju- right.
Uh, abstain on number six, initials E S S and B D, yes to the remaining.
Okay.
Ms. Cozempel?
Yes to all, motion carries. Under Special Education, motion to approve items one through four.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Helfin?
Yes.
Ms. Pollard?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Genovi?
You're up.
Yes.
Mrs. Galen Arrow?
Yes.
Ms. Cozempel?
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Um, nothing under negotiations, any items of new business? I feel like someone said they had new business, no? Nothing new? Okay. Uh, motion to open to the public again.
So moved.
All in fa- can I get, who said? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Ron, Lou Guerini? It's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, uh, here, because I'm a little concerned about the, um, superintendent search, and a few other things that I feel are just too highly political in terms of the way you've been running the Board of Education, Mrs. Cozempel. And I'm going to refer here to two, uh, emails you sent me at different times, and then I'll just read them, I was going to hand them out, you can get a copy later, but, uh, one of them was in response to an email list that I, I sent out an email to a group of people, uh, when there was an opening for the Board of Education for, um, the vacancy when somebody had resigned. And Mrs. Baker was one of the quote-unquote candidates for the position, and there were two other people whom I found out about through, uh, a teacher at Bunker, not Bunker Hill, I'm sorry, at Chestnut Ridge, had posted something. And I put out a, I guess a support for Mrs. Baker compared to the other two people, which I knew, what, what I knew about them. I didn't even know their names, I just knew their backgrounds, from what I was told. Um, after I sent that out, you were on the list, you wrote back to me and said, she was the favorite, but after this email, and it was strictly about those candidates, I am not so sure I can share things in confident with, confidence with her anymore. Wow, just wow. You know, we have a principal that's missing from Orchard Valley, goes away, um, we have her, you know, in the past, things she did that were just, I considered unethical, uh, that I told you about, there's other things that go on in this district, and this gets a wow. First of all, Mrs. Baker didn't tell me about the, the candidates, and so number two, it, apparently you told her about the candidates, and you weren't supposed to tell her that, and you're blaming her for telling, supposedly telling me, which didn't happen, as if she's unethical, okay? I think there's a problem there, and I don't understand how, uh, the seven other, uh, head, no, six other head nodders on the board here, uh, besides Mrs. Clancy and Mrs. Baker, um, can stand there and just let, let this stuff go on. I mean, it's obvious that you're looking at the perspective of, of the Board of Education from your perspective, what it means to you personally, that Mrs. Baker would be a good candidate if she could play along with your game. That's the way I read that one. Then later, in relation to this, actually not later, before this, in July, you wrote, uh, about Mrs. Baker's candidacy, perhaps she was going to put in for the Board of Education and just run. You wrote, I always agree with you, so do what you want, as if I'm going to tell Mrs. Baker what to do. I'll support it, I am just a little more strategic because I feel Shaniqua should be the next superintendent, and want to ensure that. Connie would be on board for that. I don't know how you would know Connie would be on board for that. She knows how effective Shaniqua is in West Effort, and the change she would affect in Washington Township. I just also know that the unions likely vote for our people because we support them, as will various other unions because we are supportive of labor unions. I, I don't, you know, I don't know where the Teamsters stand on Washington Township Board of Education elections, but anyway. Elaine, Elaine was reluctant, that would be Mrs. Clancy, because she was, she was elected, excuse me, because she was, uh, staff, and nobody was slit, slated, slated, and people know Clancy over Ellis. I want Brian on the board, and it's hard enough to get him elected in this district without another Dem diluting the votes, meaning Mrs. Baker, if she ran. I'd support her full run next year. This is a governor gubernatorial election, so higher saliency, I guess is the word I'm looking at here. Con- Connie is better over the red hats. Connie is better over the red hats who are sheep that consume biased media and don't give a crap about the kids. I, you know, I can write things like this if I want, I'm a resident, but you're the Board of Education president, and when you're elected to these positions, just like Republican senators and congressmen who refuse to represent the entire body and just consider that twenty percent, you're elected to represent everyone. You shouldn't be talking about red hats and, and blue hats, and, and picking the superintendent before, uh, any applications ever went out, I think is very damning, and, um, I don't know if citizens could file an ethics complaint, but I think we have to look into it, and it's a shame because it throws a cloud over everything.
Okay, your time is up, you've said enough of your fairy tale. Ron, when you speak, I feel like I am an administrator in the high school moderating a fight between two teenagers, and it's constantly, and everything that you just said is your fiction in your email group with your fifty-five people, and, yeah, in your emails where you, where you quote fake people so-and-so said to me, and I don't want to be a part of it, and when you go low like that, yeah, I'm going to go high. So say whatever you want to say about me, there's nothing wrong with the superintendent search, Mrs. Baker is consistently violating ethics and is having an ethics violation against her, now you're going to walk away when I'm trying to respond to you and your accusations. This means nothing to me. This means nothing to me. When you open your mouth, and when she opens her mouth, and you're trying to, and you're trying to anger people and get me to yell, you got it, you got it, you got it, you got it, congratulations, see you later. Motion to close to the public. You're full of lies, and don't say that Mrs. Clancy is a head knocker.
And I would like to say that I'm not a head knocker, I have my own opinions, so thank you.
Same.
And I'm tired of hearing that in all your emails as well.
You're unified against this.
I have, I have my own opinions, thank you, Mr. Lou Guerini.
You got what you wanted, Ron. Motion to close to the public.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
I would like to make one comment to the elected board member who is up here, who is consistently sitting in confidential meetings and then talking to him about it. That's the problem, okay? And this is what happens, and everything that he just said is a pack of lies, but the one thing that is true is I did talk to you when you came to me and said you wanted to be appointed to the board, and I said, the nonsense with him that you're already involved in, that you have been involved in for many years, has to stop if you're a board member. I thought you would be a good board member, I thought you were a member of NJEA, and you would be supportive of teachers, and that wasn't the case, and that's why you were taken off negotiations, and you were talking to another staff member outside of negotiations, and you ran up close to three thousand dollars in legal bills when you were chair of negotiations with your in-between questions that you didn't want to ask at meetings, and I have the bills in my bag, I'll give them to you. So that answers that. Motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to make a comment for the public. I have not in any way disclosed anything from executive committee, I have not told Ron Lou Guerini anything, and if, if there is concern, go through the ethics violation process, I have no problem, because I have not done anything. Okay, I'm on this board, I've been involved in, um, negotiations, grievances, I've been an educator for over thirty-five years, I care about kids, I care about the community, and my record supports the superintendent and his recommendations. Um, you know, I, I, I absolutely need to say that the kinds of things that you just said are not true, and we could find out in the ethics process, I have no problem with that.
Good, motion to adjourn.
Who's leaking the information, then?
Okay, yeah, who, who tells Ron stuff? Because I don't.
And this is a non-Democrat saying this.
Let's talk about it.
Yeah.
Let's talk about it.
It doesn't matter what party you're on, on the Board of Education.
Yeah, we're all for the kids.
Exactly.
For what's the best thing for the kids. I have proof how he knows some things. And I won't get into it now, but we'll get into it with process. It didn't come from me.
Are we done? It, you just put on record that you have proof of how he knows things? Okay, thank you. Just, so do I. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.